Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for a very smooth opening to the 2022-23 school year and ask that you continue to bless this school district, our staff, our students, and their parents as we work together to make this a positive, meaningful school year. Be with our very young ones who made their first steps into the big school, our kindergarteners are in, and our four-year-olds will be coming next week. Help them and their parents as they adjust to their new surroundings and new routines. We are grateful for a teaching staff who returned ready and eager to get into the new year, and I ask that you grant them both the patience and wisdom they need to make this indeed a great year. These things we ask in your name.
Ms. Lee Bowman, will you lead us in place, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. O'Chee, roll call, please.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Egan?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman?
Here.
Ms. LeMoyne?
Here.
Ms. Isar?
Here.
Mr. England?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. White?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. O'Chee. Ms. Isar, do you have a phone number?
Yes, thank you, Mr. England. At this time, I would like to take a moment of silence for Cecile Genovine, who was one of our former -- she was a teacher with us for many, many years. She was a former classmate of mine, and also she taught at St. Bernard Middle and also at Shelmont High for many years. So a moment of silence for Cecile Genovine.
Cecile Genovine.
Thank you. And our deepest condolences go out to the Genovine family. And just to say also that Cecile, she dedicated her life to education, public education, and for that we'll always be very, very grateful. Thank you very much.
The condolences go out to the family. Okay, we'll move on to item number two, Education Committee. Ms. LeMoyne?
Thank you, Mr. England. Agenda item number two is the consideration of the St. Bernard Parish Public Schools 2022-2023 Pupil Progression Plan, and we have Ms. LeAnn Harleton with us this evening. Welcome.
Hi, nice to see everyone.
Good to see you.
I am here with the first draft of our 2022-2023 Pupil Progression Plan. For those of you who are not familiar with this, I know you all are except for probably Kelly, we have -- we do this every year where we revise our pupil progression plan, and the state gives us guidelines, and we just put what our answer to those guidelines are in our pupil progression plan. We have been through two very traumatic years, and with COVID and with this, you know, absences of kids and teachers and staff members because of COVID and because of other things, but we've had two very stressful years in education. I can tell you that right now. However, we're back on track, and we had our first meeting today with my teachers at Davies, Kristi Wilhelmus and Brenda Montalbano and Andrea Lichardi and myself and Debbie Seibert went, and we proposed to them what is now -- what now elementary teachers have to do. They were our first meeting today, so I want to tell you. In this pupil progression plan, if you look at it, everything in black is what the state tells us are the guidelines. Everything in blue, and I put it in blue so that you know that is parish policy. It's basically what they tell us to do. A lot of new acts, a lot of new laws, but most of them pertain to elementary school, and I'd like to tell you about three of them that are now in this pupil progression plan. First of which is this is a big push on literacy throughout the state. Of course, you all know that. K through three teachers, we met with them today, and they knew about this during our in-service a couple of weeks ago, and last year we told them it was coming. But K through three teachers, I'm sorry, K through three teachers, in the next two weeks will be administering the DIBELS test to all K through three students. Any student that scores below the benchmark on the DIBELS data, the teacher has to notify the parent and have a parent meeting with the parent and administrator of the school and the teacher to discuss what the child's weakness is and how can the parent help that child at home. So that is the first of the changes that are being made because we do have to meet with every parent of every child in K through three that scores below level on DIBELS. Dr. Wilhelmus, Dr. Sotomayor-Machia did make a very nice presentation today. It was beautiful. She and Brenda did a great job of telling the teachers. She laid it all out for them, had formats for them, templates for them, so they know what's coming there. The second thing is what we've done in the past, and that is all our fourth grade students that scored below basic -- no, I'm sorry, that didn't score two basics on either -- okay, they have the ELA Math Science and Social Studies test. So just for fourth grade, if they scored -- they didn't score two basics in those four areas, they had to score at least two basics. So if they got a mastery, a mastery, and an approaching basic and approaching basic, we had to put them on an individual academic assistance plan. That's another meeting with all the parent, the parent, the administrators, the teachers, and they're holding those meetings now to give them what kind of interventions we're going to be using with these students during the day to help remediate their deficiencies. So that's the second thing, the IAIPs for our fourth grade students that did not score at least two basics on the four areas of LEAP. And the third thing is also for not just elementary students, but for all students in LEAP that scored below mastery, we have to offer them after-school tutoring. Okay? And we are going to offer after-school tutoring at the elementary school on Tuesdays and at the middle school on Thursdays, I believe. I think that's what we decided, right? Tuesdays and Thursdays. And so we will be having all those new additions to our -- oh, and then in elementary level, we're also having interventionists to work with the students who are below level in K through five. And we're trying to get interventionists for the middle schools also. So if you know anybody who wants to be an interventionist, we're looking. We're hiring. So if you know anyone, we certainly would like to have them because we would like to give as much help as we can because these kids missed a lot. Okay? A lot of these kids were in virtual schools. A lot of these kids were homeschooled. A lot of these kids were absent a lot, so they missed a lot of the basic skills. So we're just trying to build those skills and get them back to where they need to be. And it's going to be a tough challenge, but we're up for it. So we went today to Davies, and we're going to Gochae tomorrow, and we have our -- the rest of them planned out. So this is what the pupil progression plan is.
And just to piggyback a little bit on what Ms. Harleton was saying, if you go back, this year's third graders in the year 1920, when we closed down on March 13th of 2020 and missed the last nine weeks of school, those kids were in kindergarten. So they lost that. The following year, their first grade year was very disruptive, if you remember. Some people chose virtual learning. We did some hybrid. Kids were quarantined in many cases. They reached second grade last year, trying to catch up. They're in third grade. So this year's third graders and fourth graders, because if you look at the LEAP 2025 test from last year, like they went in the third -- this year's fourth graders went third grade last year. Statewide, all of those scores took a big dip because those were the kids most impacted in their foundational skills these last two years that we've had all these disruptions. Older kids who already can read, who know the basics, if their education was interrupted, they can do some catch-up work much more easily. But when you have the little ones with those foundational skills that they should have learned in learning to read in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade in that period of time, those are the kids that have the most tremendous learning gaps. So what we're trying to do now, and that focus is going to be very heavily on our third and fourth graders this year, is to try to put as much and as many interventions in there as we possibly can and try to do those remediate, that remediation, that intervention, that catch-up as quickly as we possibly can. So that's going to be the major focus. That's the state's focus. That's our focus within our district, and it's really human resources and manpower, having to get in there with enough people to provide tutoring, to provide intervention during the day, after school. And it's very, very difficult to get that many people for the needs of all of the children that we have. But we're going to do -- we have a plan.
We have a plan, and you know, our teachers work very hard. This is not going to be easy for them. This is going to be a challenge for them, but I know they are a wonderful group of people that will do what they have to do to get these kids back on track and to do what we have to do as mandated by the state. You know, what our interventionist are -- we're planning for our interventionist to do is the classroom teacher is going to do the remediation. Each classroom teacher has, at the elementary level, has a block of remediation. So they're going to do the actual remediation with the kids, looking at all the data we have from the new math series we just got and the reading series and Lexia and all the other things that we're using, Star Reading, and they're going to look at the data and say, okay, why can't this child read? Like, is it because he doesn't know his phonics yet, or is it because he has some kind of other problem that we may not be aware of? We can't just say he has a reading comprehension problem. We have to find out why he's got a reading comprehension problem. So our interventionist, the people we're hiring to come into the schools, are not going to be doing remediation with our kids. What they are going to be doing is acceleration with them. And we had a lot of success with this in summer school because what this is, is if I'm being pulled out for acceleration, I'm a child who's getting a preview of what's happening next week. So when they go into the classroom next week, some of these kids are going to experience success for the first time. Oh, I know that, and they'll raise their hands, and they know what's coming before it comes because they're going to be introduced to it the week before. So we do that for -- that's what the interventionist are going to be doing because that's another push from the state to do acceleration. So we're going to use our classroom teachers as remediation and our interventionist for acceleration.
So we're hoping to tap into a lot of our retired teachers who are willing to come back part-time and work one-on-one with children in tutoring and intervention.
So if you know anybody, call me.
Call.
Question for Ms. Isar?
Or if any of you have free time during the day.
Tried to talk my sisters into it.
We need to get them to come forward.
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate it. The DIBELS test, that's given?
Three times a year.
Three times.
It's going to be given in August and December before we leave for the holiday because the report has to be to -- okay, this is what's happening in DIBELS. For the first year, we did the new DIBELS, and the new DIBELS tests the child across the board. Like, if he's oral reading fluency for second grade, he's going to be tested for oral reading fluency in August, in December, and again in April. I think it's kindergarten that's doing -- the kindergarten and first grade is doing nonsense words, and you say, well, why are they doing nonsense words? Because if they see the word cat, they might -- we might not know if they really don't know the word cat, if they really know the word cat because they've seen it so often, but if they see a nonsense word that has three syllables in it and they can pronounce it, then we know that they know their phonetic sounds. That's why we focus on that. But it's going to be the three times during the year that they're going to do the nonsense words. So it's three times a year that we're doing DIBELS testing.
Okay, thank you.
But we have a lot of data, especially, you know, I know we have a literacy push, but we're going to have so much data with our math, it's going to be incredible because we got a new program. But it's a literacy push right now. So that's what most of this is in the pupil. But pupil progression plan is what it always is, like, what do they need to pass to go on to the next grade? Okay?
Thank you. And on the intervention, of course, the interventionists need to have a -- an education degree, correct, Ms. O'Chee?
Well, either a degree in education or if they're going to college and studying that, we will put them in a very narrowly focused track with a student.
Okay.
So we can utilize some of our college students.
And we give them all the materials they need.
Right. They don't have to create it themselves.
We have it all mapped out.
Okay. So there's no planning.
Brenda Montalbano and Kristy did all of that, and they have it all mapped out for them. So it was, we had a lot of success with that in summer skills.
Great. Okay, and I'm assuming that the entire state had the same dip as we did because of the problems with students in classroom, right?
It was statewide. It was statewide dip, especially in third grade.
And then on the, with the acceleration and intervention, is the state going to provide additional funding for these programs? Or is that going to be part of the MFP?
No, it's the ESAR funding that's coming from the federal government for the -- it's part of that whole American Rescue Plan where the schools are getting additional funds. And one of the major focus, well, there are few major focuses, but one of the focuses is to address the learning loss that students have. So we're using the federal monies for the next two years, a major portion of it, to address this particular effort. Other uses of it are all the, you know, the disinfectants, all the stuff we do for the buildings and the -- there are so many different allowable costs. But addressing the learning loss is a major focus of that federal funding coming down. That's the money we're using.
And not to put either of you on the spot, but as far as the meeting the two basics in?
As far as what?
Meeting the two basics on the LEAP test, about what percentage did -- didn't meet that?
It's different at different schools, Ms. Isar. You know, it's just that we looked -- a lot of the kids did okay, and like, if we'd have just had, like, they needed a basic and needed ELA in math, we'd have done well. It's just when they got to science and social studies, and I'm going to tell you, one of the reasons for social studies is we don't have a program for social studies across the state. There is no tier-one program. And when I approached two of the vendors from the two people that I work with, I asked, when are you going to do a social studies curriculum? And both of them said, we're not touching it with a 10-foot pole because it's very complex, very complicated, and they're changing the social studies standards next year. So as poorly as the kids did in social studies.
Wait, they're changing what? Social studies standards.
They're making the standards different next year.
Well, let me just mention social studies, and this is one of the major issues. The statewide assessment for social studies, the average score of every kid statewide is approaching basic.
Approaching basic.
It's very, very low. Twenty, only like 20 to 25% of the kids score at the proficient level in social studies. Well, everybody gets in an uproar and say, well, my God, do the kids know nothing about our country? What are we teaching them? It is not a test where they ask you, what are the three branches of government? Nothing like that. You're taking eight-year-olds, nine-year-olds, and they're reading lengthy passages and flipping through documents and assimilating information, writing essays, inferring from what they're reading to what they're actually doing.
And what they know back there.
So it's not like look back in the passage and find your answers.
Not there. So it's more comprehension.
It's not there. It's more critical thinking, reading comprehension. So to me, it's really a misnomer when you say it's a social studies test from what most people believe it to be. For the last six, seven years, we've been assessing in social studies with no approved curriculum. There's a scope and sequence of old standards. So there is no textbook that goes along with it. There is no what they call tier-one materials assigned to it. We have to go ahead and assimilate all the different information we can to address the standards. So it's been a mess statewide. Last year, the, I think if everybody followed it, there was the adoption of the new social studies standards, and you had everybody from the legislators to this group of people, whether it's parents or organizations, in an uproar as to what the social studies standards were going to be. Now, most people who are not in education, when they think of, well, people should be learning about our country, our government, our constitution, what has happened in the world, and more of a factual stuff. Because you know these game shows when they go around and they say, who's the President of the United States, or who's the Attorney General of the country, or how many branches of -- it's nothing like that when they assess. And all of these standards that are coming out now, we don't know what the new assessment's going to look like because, for example, tell them what they're studying in fourth grade, the new one.
What grade they would be studying next year, Mesopotamia, Egypt, and all those areas.
It's a total shift to the entire fourth grade curriculum is going to be the same shit world history. It's, so we're going to be doing a major shift next year, grade level by grade level, of what's going to be addressed, which then is going to mean we're going to be still assessed with the old test with an operational test coming in for the new standards. It's going to be a mess the next couple of years. And we still don't have an actual, actual curriculum materials to use. We're going to have to assimilate them all ourselves.
The state has a scope and sequence chart.
Yeah.
We use the state's scope and sequence chart, and we add materials to that to put on Canvas. And that's what we use. And you know, it's a shame because we work so hard and to look at these kids that have to now have an IAIP, and most of them will put over the top with social studies.
For example, when they'll come out and say in the paper, schools, 35% proficiency rate. Okay? So what does that to a regular person think? Well, gee, only 35% of our kids are on what they consider grade-level standards. Well, if you look at ELA and math, it's much, much higher. It can be 50%, I wouldn't. Social studies, you're down at 22 or 25. Science, the same way. So the social studies and science tests are bringing down all the scores. So the emphasis we have is on literacy with ELA and math, and if we just took those, the scores would be much higher statewide. But these other two that we don't really feel, or at least I don't really feel, I'll just speak for myself, that the assessment is a true assessment of what kids should be doing all year long in addressing the standards. I mean, it's just not a -- it's very different. It's a very difficult situation for the child. So if the child is a good test taker, and the child reads well and can apply, he's going to do much better, even if he's never really been taught anything in that subject area. He'll do much better than the child who has gone through each and every day knowledge about the world, you know, the city that we live in, the, you know, the community we live in, the country we live in. So it's difficult.
So one more question. So the state's pushing these standards as far as learning about?
Oh, the state uses the standards we have.
Right, through the State Department of Education, but then the tests is not reflecting the -- the tests are not reflecting the standards that they're pushing.
The tests are reflecting the standards, but not on, say, a knowledge base that most people think it's being assessed at.
It's not being assessed at that point.
So if you're learning, if your kids are bringing home and they're studying the federal government, and we have the President, and we have his cabinet, and with them we have, you know, so he's the executive branch, and we have the legislative branch with Congress, and we have the judicial branch with the judges and such, our kids can tell you that, but that's not what they're being asked on any assessment. They'll just get passages that maybe address some of those issues per se, and then they'll have to answer questions which you have to infer from what you're reading and maybe some prior knowledge that you have. It's a much higher level assessment than just knowing these issues. And it's very difficult for a kid. I mean, just think back when you were in school. It was so much easier. I can memorize this, 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 and this, and spit it back. But conceptually, yeah, you really do have to be able to read, comprehend, understand, infer. But it's very difficult when children are very little. Sometimes these assessments are written, we feel, on a much higher level than that chronological age group happens to be. And you're not going to tell me that the entire state and even nation is, you know, if the average score is at a 24, 25% proficiency level statewide, something doesn't mesh.
Right.
Something doesn't mesh.
And that just doesn't make sense. I mean, you want to assess the actual, what the children are learning, not, let me see if I can read this passage. I mean, that's called comprehension.
It's very frustrating because we try very hard to meet those standards.
Right.
And we do, but you know, nobody, we can't, the only thing we can do, you can look online, and there are sample questions that the state provides for these tests. And sometimes you want to look at that and say, ooh, you know.
I'll give it to everybody around this score sheet. We'll all sit here and take the eighth grade or fifth grade social studies exam, but we won't show each other our scores, you know?
It's amazing. It's amazing. You know, I wanted to tell you with our meetings today, we also had our special, many of our special education people there today. So it was kind of a very cohesive effort for our first meeting. So we did well.
Well, thanks for all of your hard work, and of course, all of the hard work of our teachers.
Yes, they're working very hard.
You know, and as you said, Ms. Harleton, it's difficult for the teachers and then the students, too.
Yes.
You know, if their scores aren't coming, I mean, we want to, you know, definitely rise our academic.
So we're working towards making kids want to come to school.
You working what?
We're trying to get kids to want to come to school.
Right, absolutely.
And be successful.
And be successful.
And feel that they're growing.
And feel that they're growing.
And achieving.
But you also have to have valid assessments and tests.
Correct. Well, and you know, a lot of our regular tests are valid, and when we meet with parents, these meetings that we're going to have with parents, I know they're going to be cumbersome. However, you know, you can meet with a parent in December and say, look, your child started off here, and he's already here. So, you know, we can show the growth, especially since they're testing the same skill, which is very good because before they didn't. It was different skills each time they tested them.
And on those meetings, the IAIPs, those who have to take place after school or during planning?
What we did with the IAIPs is we hate to pull a child out of cultural arts, okay, to be honest with you. So what we're trying to do is use part of their library time, like, to do ReadWorks. ReadWorks is an awesome program that we are finding social studies, science, reading passages that go along with our standards. And if they are assigned three a week, say, that they have to do what they could in library time, and when they don't do it in library time, they'd have to do it either in intervention time or sometime during the day. For math, it's very easy because our math program has a component to it that when they take the first diagnostic test, they're automatically put on where they're supposed to be, and they move from there.
But I think Ms. Isar was asking about the parent meetings.
Oh, the, yeah, the parent meetings. Oh, the parent meetings for school.
Are they after school or?
Were those parent meetings with the principal, the parent, and yes, and the teacher? When would those take place?
They usually take place during teachers' planning times.
During planning, okay.
Or after school, whenever we can get the parent in.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sometimes you keep the parent in, too. We try.
And you know, it's great that we're going to hopefully have that communication, but again, it's a lot of time that the teachers are going to have to.
And most of the parents are very grateful that we are doing the extras that we're doing with the kids.
Right. Okay, well, thank you very much.
And I'll be back in, what, two weeks to get this approved.
Any other questions for Ms. Harleton?
Any other questions?
Questions from the board? Mr. Long?
One quick question. So Ms. O'Chee, we are still teaching civics, correct?
Yes.
And is that part of the social studies?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I'm glad to hear that. I mean, I'm looking at my civics teacher over there, Mr. Campbell, from many years ago. But I'm glad to hear at least we are all teaching them.
Maybe we can look at his assessments from that long ago and see how he wrote those and what kind of tests he had to take.
Right, right. I'm sure it's a lot different than today. But thank you very much.
Any other questions for Ms. Harleton? Okay, at this time, we can Okay, at this time, we can entertain a motion. Oh, yes, you want to make a motion?
Make a motion, that would send it to the full board for reconsidering.
We have a motion by Mr. England, seconded by Mr. Long. Any other questions for Ms. Harleton? All right, seeing none, then please cast your votes.
Motion passes, 11-0.
Item number three, personal item. Mr. England, let's see, the personal changes for August 2022. Ms. Pritchard, glad to be here today.
Good to be here. How are you all doing tonight? You have the personnel changes in front of you? Yes, we've been very busy.
How are we standing, Ms. Pritchard? How are we standing with the teachers right now? Because it's been on television a lot.
Yes, I think we're in better shape than most. We still need a few positions. We are looking for a licensed professional elementary school counselor. We have lots of people who would like to be an elementary counselor, because they think that sounds like a fun job, but we need them to be licensed. That's really important. We, I just filled the last position at Tris this afternoon before I walked in, a sped position. I do need another sped position at AJ Middle, and one at Chumet High, and then we're looking for an algebra teacher at Chumet High.
Well, that's good, that is great. You know, because some school systems, what 30 teachers show up?
Yeah, yes. We've been busy. So we're working on, we've been able to get to our paras and our bus drivers and cafeteria workers, so we're getting there.
Yeah, Julie, good job.
We are. We have lots of new, exciting teachers outside.
Any questions for Ms. Pritchard? This is further information.
No question, just congratulations again.
Thank you.
We're very happy that you're here in central office and personnel director, and I know you're a wonderful teacher and principal, and we know you're going to continue to do a fine job.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it. All righty.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Pritchard? Seeing none, move on to the next item. Thank you, Ms. Pritchard.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Okay, Finance Committee, Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Mr. England. Item number 4.1 is consideration of adoption for the 2022 Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire. Once again, it's that time of the year when Mr. Fernandez presents us with the questionnaire, and we start off audit season.
Yes, sir, it's that time of the year. And as we do every year, we ask you to adopt this compliance questionnaire, which is issued by the Louisiana Legislative Auditor. It just asks for some general information about the school system, and then it asks a series of questions as to whether we are complying with the laws of the state of Louisiana concerning different financial issues. So we are asking you to adopt this, so we can present it to our auditors when they come in for the audit next month.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Fernandez?
I'm going to go to Ms. Daiso.
Mrs. Vouchet? I would just like to make a, just to make a comment, and, you know, this Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire, prior to our yearly audit, we have to send this to the Legislative Auditor of the state of Louisiana. And in it, these are affidavits, basically saying that we are complying with all of the laws of the state of Louisiana, the financial, that have to do with finance and compliance with funds. And I just wish to make a statement, school systems are probably some of the most audited entities, not only in this state, but across the nation. So when we undergo our major, and this is our major financial and compliance audit, independent auditors come in that have absolutely nothing to do with the school system. They go through every interaction that we've had over the course of the year. They look at bid documents to make sure that we are in compliance with all of our bids and the laws of the state of Louisiana, and with federal funds, the laws that pertain to allowable cost and spending of federal monies. So this major audit, they sit here as they begin field work in August. They do some, maybe a little bit ahead of time, they'll come in right after Labor Day to do the major portion of it, and spend weeks going through transactions, all of our books. And this is not, this is the major audit, but it's not the only one. Over the course of the year, we will have federal compliance audits from different entities, from the State Department, the Legislative Auditor, and the federal government. We have people coming in from outside of the state to audit our Head Start program and finances and such. So I just want people to understand the extensive oversight that is done on the millions of dollars that is spent through the school system. And I think we're proud to say that in the last, at least since I've been involved in this since 1988, and then Mr. Fernandez took over, and what year was that? I mean, the years just seem to run together as we go. But we have never had a question cost, never had an audit finding, never had one item where any money had to be paid back, nothing that was ever done or, you know, found to be out of compliance with any local, state, or federal law or statute. So I think that we've got a tremendous record in that area. And for this year, this is just the first step in certifying to the Legislative Auditor that we feel we are in compliance with all of these entities, and our auditors will be in very shortly to verify that and go through each and every item and transaction that we've done this past year. Just a little background information.
Thank you, Ms. Vouchet. Anybody else? All right, so I have a motion by Mrs. Lemoine, and a second by Mrs. Dicehart. All in favor, cast your vote.
Motion passes, 11-0.
And we move on to item number five, the second, Mr. Long.
Okay, thank you, Mr. England. Okay, Board members, we do this once a year, and the, when the legislature finishes passing the new laws that affect education, so we have to go in and revise our school board policies. So we have Ms. Pritchard here tonight, and we're going to do things a little differently tonight. Ms. Pritchard's going to give us a summary of each revision, and we're going to open the floor for questions. And at the end, we will, we will vote to send the entire package of revisions to the full board. So, Ms. Pritchard, whenever you're ready, we can start with 5.1.
Thank you. So your packets this evening are grouped and organized according to the applicable law. Starting with 5.1, it's BE, School Board Ethics. A requirement has been added to this policy based on revisions to Act 47, that if an immediate family member of a school board member or superintendent is to be promoted to an administrative position, the family member must have been employed by the school board for at least one year.
Okay, any questions?
You don't want to vote on the individual?
No, no, no. Any questions from board members? Okay. Go to the next one, Ms. Pritchard.
Yep, so 5.2 is EDD, School Bus Scheduling and Routing. In accordance with Act 640, this update removed certain restrictions requiring the loading and unloading of students on shoulders of the roads when near their home. And it now reads, paragraph 2, on the bottom of page 1, "Bus operators shall be prohibited from loading or unloading students at or near their homes while the bus is in a lane of traffic unless the bus is in the lane farthest to the right side of the road, so that there is not a lane of traffic between the bus and the right side curb or other edge of the road."
Makes sense. Okay, thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, we can go on, Ms. Pritchard.
Okay, so 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, and 5.6 all relate to Act 529. 5.3 is GAA, Equal Opportunity Employment. In accordance with Act 529, this update prohibits discrimination based on natural, protective, or cultural hairstyle. Natural, protective, or cultural hairstyle is defined as including, but is not limited to, afros, dreadlocks, twists, locks, braids, cornrow braids, bantu knots, curls, and hairstyle to protect hair texture or for cultural significance. That is the only change.
Okay. Any questions?
I'm good.
Okay, moving on.
For 5.4, which is GAMB, Employee Dress Code, the same change that I mentioned for 5.3 is in accordance with Act 529, that prohibits discrimination based on natural, protective, or cultural hairstyle. I do also want to point out, where you see the information in red, that has been taken out of this policy because it is included in our employee handbook and does not need to be in our actual policy. So that is why that has been scratched out as well.
Thank you. Any questions? We can move on.
5.4 is JAA, Equal Education Opportunities. And again, in accordance with Act 529, this update prohibits discrimination based on natural, protective, or cultural hairstyle.
Okay, questions? We can move on.
And 5.6, JCDB, Student Dress Code, is the final update for Act 529, that prohibits discrimination based on natural, protective, or cultural hairstyle.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Okay.
Next.
The next is 5.7, JBD, Student Absences and Excuses. This update provides additional support for expectant and parenting mothers and fathers in accordance to revisions of Act 472. Absences are required to be excused if related to pregnancy and parenting, and that at least 10 days of excused absences are provided for both parents after the birth of a child. Schools are to allow the parenting students to make up work in an amount of time no less than the number of days absent, with options such as repeating a semester, online course recovery, or receiving home-based instruction. Documentation for absences can be from a physician or parent or legal guardian. The Act also requires high schools to provide accommodations for breastfeeding mothers and to inform parenting students about the availability of childcare within the schools, if available, or outside the school system.
Wow. This is crazy, though. Any questions? You have a question?
Just a comment, yeah.
Okay.
5.8 is JQA, Expectant and Parenting Student. This update provides additional support for expectant and parenting mothers and fathers in accordance with, again, Act 472. Absences are required to be excused if related to pregnancy and parenting, and that at least 10 days of excused absences are provided for both parents after the birth of a child. Schools are to allow the parenting students to make up work in an amount of time no less than the number of days absent, with options such as repeating a semester, online course recovery, or receiving home-based instruction. Documentation for absences can be from a physician or parent or legal guardian. And again, it requires high schools to provide accommodations for breastfeeding mothers and to inform parenting students about the availability of childcare within the school system, if available, or outside of the school system.
Thank you. Any questions?
Okay.
We can move on.
5.9 is JCDAF, Bullying and Hazing. This revision, in accordance with Act 697, requires each elementary and high school to institute a program to prohibit and prevent bullying. The Act defines bullying, requires employees and volunteers to be made aware of their responsibilities regarding bullying, and provides reporting process, disciplinary measures, remedies, and procedures for investigating and failure to act.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? We can move on.
5.10 is JD, Discipline. There are minor wording changes in this policy, changing the word must to shall. Additional verbiage in relation to student removal from the classroom is included on the second page. Any student removed from class in kindergarten through grade 5 shall not be permitted to return to class for at least 30 minutes unless agreed to by the teacher initiating the disciplinary action. A student removed from class in grades 6 through 12 shall not be permitted to return to class during the same class period unless agreed to by the teacher initiating the disciplinary action. Whenever a teacher is struck by a student, the student, in addition to any other discipline given, shall be permanently removed from the teacher's classroom unless the teacher objects, or unless the principal, with the concurrence of the building-level committee, finds the striking incident to be entirely inadvertent.
Thank you. Any questions?
And 5.11, JDE, Placement at the Alternative School, is again in relation to Act 374. There are minor wording changes, changing the word shall, must to shall.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
5.12 is JGC, Student Health Services. These revisions, in accordance to Act 562, include provisions for seizure treatment and training. Parents or legal guardians of a student with a seizure disorder may submit a seizure management and treatment plan to the school administration for use by employees who have regular interaction with the student. The Department of Education is required to develop two courses of instruction, one for nurses and one for other employees who have regular interaction with students, who have a seizure management and treatment plan. Those employees will be required to take and successfully complete the course once every two years.
Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, 5.13 is JGCD, Administration of Medication. This revision, in accordance with Act 315, now requires a policy for maintaining a supply of auto-injectable epinephrine in a secure location in each classroom assigned to a student who is deemed by his or her physician to be a high risk for anaphylactic reaction and incapable of self-administration. Also required is the authorization from the parent, a physician certification, and providing each impacted teacher with information regarding signs and symptoms of anaphylactic reactions, accessing and administering the drug, and other specific information. Each school is required to include this information in its student handbook and to post the information on the school's website. This policy is also to be provided to any parent or legal guardian who informed the school in writing that the student has a risk of anaphylaxis.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have one question.
Ms. Dicehart?
And I understand this is based on the state law, but, and I haven't read the entire law, because it's pretty lengthy, but this injectable epinephrine is only mandated in those classrooms where we know a child has a problem?
Yes.
But not in every classroom?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we can go on.
5.14 is a new policy, JM, Student Voter Registration. This new policy, in accordance with Act 624, requires that school boards provide an opportunity for each high school senior, who is at least 17 years old, to register to vote by using a high school computer to fill out an electronic voter registration application, or by using the state mail voter registration application form.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Move on.
And the last one, 5.15, JDJED, Bids and Quotations. Act 204 of the Regular Session, Raise the Limits for Bids on Materials and Supplies, now provides that the threshold for requiring advertising and let by contract to the lowest responsible bidder from $30,000 to $60,000. Purchases exceeding $30,000 but lower than $60,000 shall be made by obtaining quotes, raising the threshold from $10,000 to $30,000 respectively, and this act took effect on August 1st.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Any questions?
I'd just like, I'd just like to make a statement, Mr. Warner.
Yes, go right there.
Thank you, Lexi, for being the keeper of the policy. And there's an enormous policies that we have to keep up with, and, you know, it just seems like every year, we just get this jam down our throat. We don't have a say. We have to pass it, we have to accept and adopt the policies. And the policies are, as they have numerous unfunded mandates in them that we have to absorb the cost for. And it just seems to me is a lot of legislative overreach here. I don't, I don't know what else to say about it, but that's all I really have to say about this. Thank you.
Mr. Warner, every year, as we say, I hold my breath every time the legislature goes into session, and then say a prayer of Thanksgiving when the session ends, and then we have to go through and see how it really affects us. And, and you're right, sometimes, and look, I'm sure each and every one of these is important to someone, but the collective version of all of this, as it comes down on every public school and every public school system, is it's enormous responsibility, much less the cost and the human resources associated with it. The amount of responsibility that the system and individual teachers have to absorb is enormous, and the continued training that has to occur, because it sounds very simple. But if you're a teacher, you don't know anything about the administration of epinephrine. You don't know some of what is being mandated here. So then it kicks in where we, as a system, have to provide the training necessary to people, for people to feel comfortable with what is coming down. Is it a good thing for kids? Sure, it's a good thing for children who are in different situations that we have here, but it is tremendously burdensome on the public school system, and the resources to put them into effect are never provided. It's just unfunded mandates, like you say, just go ahead and do it. And it takes a lot. You don't just flip a switch overnight and make it happen.
In addition to that, it, it puts a lot of people at risk. There's a lot of situations that if you read it through there, are you putting employees at risk?
Well, and I'm going to say this and hope, and not to open up a can of worms, but when you read five point nine, the bullying and hazing policy, in it, what the legislature has done is to provide penalties for teachers and administrators who fail to report or investigate any act of potential bullying. So if an employee sees an act, or, and really, people have to understand that bullying is not an isolated incident when one kid is mean to another child. It is a pattern of repeated behavior directed toward someone. Well, if a teacher or an employee now fails to report, if you read this law, then we have to place that teacher, we have to suspend the teacher for a period of time while we investigate why this didn't occur and report that action to the State Department of Education. If a school administrator fails to investigate fully, I am supposed to suspend that administrator without pay for a period of time and report actions to the State Department, if you read it. So people have to be very careful of the words that they use, because every action is not what, is not a bullying action. You know, we all grew up, I mean, kids are not always, in some ways, the nicest to each other. If these are isolated incidents, we address them, and we hope it's a learning experience, and you move on. If they are repeated actions by someone toward an individual, yes, then we have to make sure that those things are fully investigated and stopped. We also have situations where we have children with special needs that have special protections under the federal guidelines. So sometimes the acts that they perform could be perceived negatively by some, but they do not mean it in that way, and they are protected under IDEA. So there's a whole lot of nuances that go on with this, but you're right, sometimes I think the overreach of the legislators, because someone decides they want to pass a certain bill, and then we're impacted statewide for those individual incidents. And it does put a lot of pressure on individual teachers, school administrators, the system as a whole, and we all want to do the right thing and what's good for kids.
Maybe that's the reason why, and how to show that the teachers read it, the president.
Well, the, the responsibilities of teachers, you know, people think, well, teachers, you walk in the classroom, you present material, all the kids sit there, all absorb it at the same rate, you feel good about it, and you go home. I mean, that's not teaching. And not, even the academic piece now becomes just a small part of what all the teachers need to do to be effective and to help kids. But they're expected to be many things other than pure educators, so it's very, very difficult.
Okay, thank you. Is that it, Mr. Warner?
Well, since we really don't really have a choice, I guess I'm under protest. I'm going to make a motion that we send this to the full board.
With a protest?
I'm under protest stating I'm going to have to move it forward. We don't really have a choice.
We don't have a choice.
We have to adopt it.
Well, okay, we have a motion by Mr. Warner and a second by Mr. Smith. Further discussion?
Oh, no, I was just going to second.
I was going to make a substitute motion to adopt it under protest. Really, you know, I'm looking at the full, the full law on the hazing and bullying, which I, and it, you know, it states that it includes chaperones, who are chaperoning activities also, besides teachers, that we could suspend them. Volunteers, chaperones, and, you know, it, this is pretty strong. And electronically, how would a teacher know electronically, you know, if students aren't supposed to have their phones, right, during school time, during class time, I should say? I know they have them, but they're supposed to turn them off, and, you know, I mean, that's a lot of responsibility on our teachers. And, you know, and then they're going to be held accountable for those electronic and other?
Well, and there's a lot of court cases, too. I think it was just a Supreme Court decision having to do with the right of freedom of speech of a cheerleader, not in this state, but in another state, using profanity about their fellow teen members and people at the school, but because it was done off campus through a social media school, the school did take action. Supreme Court overturned it and said, you can't do that, it's freedom of speech. So we run into the situations of what is, it's supposed to loosely, it's supposed to have, if it has a negative effect on the operations of the school, then we might be able to go in and take some action. But if you have, say, students not being very nice to each other on social media, and it's not occurring during the school day, there's a very fine line on what we can do and what we can't do, what becomes parent responsibilities versus, you know, school responsibilities. And there's a lot of court cases on that, and you've got to be, you know, very careful. And what you just read about the bullying statute, as it applies to volunteers, chaperones and all that, then that begs the question, or makes us think now, do I have to provide training for every parent who wants to go on a field trip before I can let them go on a field trip with their child? Because if one of these situations occurs and we have not trained them to look for that, is that then a problem? So there's a whole lot going on. It's easy to write a law like this and put it in statute, but the actual implications, it's very difficult at times. So do I say to all parents, no one can go on it until you come in and attend a session on what this is, how to report it, and what your responsibilities are? I don't know. How far do we go with that?
If I could just finish, you know, and of course, I don't think anybody around this table or in our school system, you know, wants bullying at any time, but, again, you know, to, to have such harsh effects on our employees and adults, you know, and some of these other policies that were written by lawmakers, they have no, some of them have no idea what domino effect that these are going to cause in implementing these, these policies. So, anyway.
And I do want to make a comment that-
I think we do need to be under protest.
In the course of our curriculum, through the second step program and a program that we have, we address this with the kids. We talk about these things. We have lessons pertaining to these. If we have individual cases that we know of, we immediately address those cases. And we do the best that we can, and we never allow, purposefully allow, a child to feel anxiety about school, or worried about what his classmate is going to say or do, or whatever, and we do the best we can with that. So I don't want people to think we don't address these situations when they occur. But you cannot control every aspect of a child's life or their parent's life. We can try to control what happens on the school site. We can't control what happens at night when kids are home texting each other. We can't control any of those types of behaviors. It's really up to the parents to police that at home and to, if they are going to allow their children certain electronic devices, that they have oversight of those themselves. And, and it's, it's got to be a shared, you know, a shared responsibility there. So we do everything in our power because we never want a child to feel uncomfortable being in school, so.
So, Ms. Ho Chi, this is, these revisions are based on state law that's been passed.
Yes.
So we-
They're all attached, the actual law themselves.
We have no choice. We have to-
We have no choice.
We can't change it, and I know we can't override it, and we can't modify it, correct?
No. We can't modify any intent or wording of the law. We can't overrule a state law. Now, we can be more restrictive, say, than a state law. We can pass something locally that would be more restrictive, but we cannot violate what the law says.
Correct. Good point. Any other questions?
I, you know, just another statement, maybe the Louisiana School Board Association, the Superintendent's Association, or, you know, because this is policy, we're adopting policy that we are responsible for upholding, and it's just putting, like, a burden on us to try to follow through with the policy that's setting forth, that they're setting forth for us. That's, that's how I see it, and I don't know what our recourse is to go back to anybody else and say, hold on, guys, wait up a second. How, how do we actually do this without, you know, coming up with some more money for us to fulfill some of these policy changes that you're, you know, cramming down our throat?
And, and I do want to say this about the Louisiana School Board Association. They have Janet Pope, who's the executive director, and Danny Garrett, and those people are up there lobbying and talking to legislators every day. If you would see what some of these laws originally looked like, you would, you'd be appalled in some instances. So sometimes the final result is almost a compromise, and it is difficult. But you're right, it, it's not that anything in here is a bad thing to do. That's not the issue at all. But you hit the nail on the head, Mr. Warner, it's, it's, it's labor-intensive, it's going to cost in monetary and human resources, and we should, when these are passed, there should be a companion allocation that goes along with it to implement that. Or at least an increase in the per pupil amount in the MFP to, say, directed toward these activities. You know, something, there should be some increase in revenues to put these things into effect.
Well, unfunded mandates, we've been dealing with that for many, many years, so I don't think that'll ever change.
No.
If I may, for a little-
Go ahead, Mr. Siegen.
Years ago, I had a case with two young girls, boyfriend involved, okay? And one of the little girls would get on the internet and say, well, she wasn't too smart about what she said, and she saw, she didn't identify herself, but there was enough information to show that she was the one that was putting all this trash on the internet. So what I did at that time, though there was no law to back me up, is because, no, I wrote a letter to the mother and father of the child and told them that the child, what she had done, when she, when it was done, and who the, the other young lady was, et cetera, et cetera. I told them that I was going to file a lawsuit, and we're going to find out what the court was going to do. Well, it ended, and then it died. Mommy and daddy didn't know what this little girl was doing. So there is some other avenues that you can approach, and I'm not talking about, oh, yeah, grab you a lawyer immediately, but I'm telling you that every one of these laws, and every one of these that, when I call them laws that have been prepared, if there is a problem, because sometimes, I think in my short time reading what I had here, obviously, it's being, the, the bill was sent in because somebody had an axe to grind, or someone, maybe child was guilty of something or not guilty of something, so they put these things in, and boom, you're right, they become law, but it, they can be attacked, and in that case, could be thrown out. I was fortunate, not me, it, the little girl, and it was all bull. There was no truth in any of it. And so when mommy and daddy found out, and I did, in the times when the phones were being used and with the internet, and it stopped. And in fact, the mother called me and went to one of the, thanked me for what I had done, because she said that wasn't anything that they thought was a good thing for their child to, daughter to be doing, and that she would talk to it. And then next thing you know, the next day it was over. So what I'm trying to say is, some of these things, I just sit here and scratch my head and say, you know, Doris, you said, some people hasn't had an axe to grind, and because of that, they'll make laws, and that's what it has to be with us, they make laws that are really questionable. Just like, there's one thing about giving a child a shot. I wouldn't want to give a child a shot, because, number one, I don't know what that disease is. I don't, there's no description in there about the thing. What if you give the child a shot, okay, and it has more detriment than it does good? And either the child becomes part of the body, doesn't function properly, or worse, death. They're putting another monkey on somebody's back that I feel shouldn't be. And our teachers have nothing to deal with to contend with these things, because if you read the law, and, I mean, I'm no doctor, in shape or form, but when you read that thing, you know, I don't know what it is. I don't know if it's a, you know, child can't breathe out of time, or some other thing, or some of the body functions don't work, the old heart don't do right. body functions don't work, the old heart don't do right. So, you know, I don't know what the answer would be, but I think some of these things could be attacked, and I, I feel in benefit to our teachers, and very often, it's done properly, hopefully, to do something beneficial for the children. And that's what we're all looking for. If they do something that's going to harm a child through no real negligence of a school teacher, or, as you say, you've got somebody that's going to take a bunch of kids on a, on a field trip, and one of the children, you know, causes a problem of some sort, they're going to be sued, you know? So, and I'm not just talking about a lawsuit now, I'm talking about some of these things. The gentleman over there, Mr. Warner, he brought out a lot of good points, excellent points that, you know, I think it would be great if we had some people up there in the legislature that would look at some of these things, because they may never hardly ever look at.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Egan.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any, any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please, Ms. Hoce, machines.
Motion passes, eleven, zero.
Thank you, Ms. Pritchard.
You didn't have a choice, yeah.
Very good presentation.
Superintendent Snopes, Ms. Hoce.
Just to reiterate, we had a wonderful and smooth opening of school. Our, our students arrived Friday for the first day, half our kindergarten, kindergarten kids came, the other half came yesterday. So we have all K to twelve students, and next week our four-year-olds will arrive. So at our opening last Thursday at the Civic Center, the number of teachers and employees who came up to me, and we're just so happy that we were able to come back together in person. And Ms. Pritchard had come up with a really great idea with that little back-to-school booth where everybody was taking selfies, and, you know, the older I get, the less I realize how popular that is. So I'm sitting there thinking, my God, all those people really want to go and do that. But it, it really, really worked out well. So we're just welcoming back all of our students and our family, our parents, and of course, all of our employees, and I want to thank everyone for just a wonderful, smooth opening of school. At our next meeting in two weeks, the, Paul Grethel from the Retired Teachers Association has requested to come before the board to appear, so he will be here. And thirdly, one of the things I think that has been a byproduct of COVID, we've had a lot of absenteeism in schools with our students. And many kids have gotten to, I think you may have read in the paper, where we're talking about truancy, missing so many days of school in the last couple of years. So we have renewed our efforts in that way. When we brought in Andrela Chardy into the central office to take Ms. Hayes' place, I expanded that role a little bit, and one of the things that she's going to be responsible for, I'm taking that whole issue of truancy, and she's going to ride herd on that as our representative in working with the DA's office. Perry Nikosia's been wonderful in partnering with us in that respect, and we're going to have the procedures in place so as children, especially elementary and middle school students, who are missing excessive numbers of school days without valid excuses, we're going to have that joint team together to make a concerted effort to see why are, why are the kids not coming to school? Is there something we need to do to support those families a little bit better to make sure they get here? Or do we need some type of intercession from our court system to help parents realize how important it is that their children come to school each day? So I think you're going to be seeing more of an effort on our part and the DA's part, who's been very cooperative and wonderful in that respect, in getting those kids in school each and every day.
Any questions for Ms. Hoce? Page nine, we'll move on to page number seven, adjournment. Most by Mr. Campbell, second by Mr. Egan. All in favor? Aye, this means adjournment. Thank you.